Self here.
What's up, everybody? Welcome to episode 26. Hi, Tyra.
How are you?
Hey, we got a full show for you today. We are excited to have the presumptive winner of the Seattle City Council District 7 seat Bob Kettle joining us today as he prepares to take office in January. We're also going to talk about favorite Thanksgiving foods and traditions. I'm sure you have some that big holiday coming up next week. We're going to talk about the apple cup. Will it be the final one and some new happenings for the PAC 2, if we want to call it that today? And how much do you pay for a haircut? 50 bucks, couple hundred bucks? We'll weigh in on that as well. Hello, everybody. How are you?
Hey, hey, thanks for joining us once again for another episode of Sounds On. We made it to episode 26.
We did.
Isn't that great?
Isn't that great? Yeah, we had our silver anniversary last week and now we have the next 25. I don't know.
Cheers to the next 25. I'm really looking forward to that haircut conversation, but we have a lot to get to before we even get to that, Steve. Election Day has passed. It is behind us. Onto a new chapter.
Onto a new chapter, as they say. Yeah, it's been, what, nine days since the general election? And it appears as if we're going to have a number of new faces on the Seattle City Council come January. So presuming that none of those races change, it appears as if we're going to have, what, six moderate Democrats, two what are considered kind of progressives going forward when they take office? And the presumptive winner for District 7, which kind of covers downtown Seattle in that core there, is Bob Kettle. His opponent Andrew Lewis conceded last week and really quickly want to show you latest results to kind of give you the, what things look like at the moment. So let's bring out the King County election latest results from yesterday. So this is where things stand right now. Bob Kettle has 51% of the vote and Andrew Lewis has 49% of the vote. And again, we expect more results to come later on today.
And that is a 461 vote difference, just to give you some perspective there. So yeah, this was definitely one of the most talked about council races this election. Should we bring in the man himself?
Let's bring him in.
Let's bring him in. Welcome, Bob Kettle, to Sounds On. We appreciate you joining us.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for having me, Steve and Tyra. I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Has this stunk in yet in your mind?
It's getting there, yes. You know, the funny thing is, it's been nine days since the election. So we've had a, you know, an interesting, you know, process to go through, which for all the candidates, no doubt, each day is a, you know, question mark each time those ballots brought from King County elections. And so, yes, at this point, you know, the election piece is there. Now it's the, okay, the next step, the transition, and then looking forward to taking office in January.
Well, we were just talking before the show and this is the first time, I think, that Tyra and I have met you since you even began your campaign. You're coming to us from your home office this morning. And since we have our own little mementos on our bookshelves behind me here, what is on your bookshelf off in the distance? What's some of the interesting things you have there?
Well, as people know from the campaign trail, I had a career in the Navy before my, the last decade of being a community leader and civic volunteer. So what you see behind me is, you know, I have my shadow box from my Navy career. You can see the stars of the flag. And then I worked at the White House. So there's a bit of a White House theme on top of the bookcase with some pictures from my time when I worked as a naval social aide during President Clinton's period of time, 96, 97. And as I noted, there's a letter from George Bush that was sent handwritten that was sent to my unit in Iraq. And then, you know, typical, you know, naval intelligence officer, I've got a good set of books. And, and you may know that, you know, I was an attache naval diplomat in Russia. So the bottom shelf is all my books related to Russia. So, specifically, they'll show you.
And you're a drummer too, you said, right?
Yes, well, with the last name Kettle, you have to be a drummer. And, you know, as it turns out, you know, my dad sold his drum kit in, you know, in 64 to get his plane ticket to come to America. And, and note, my grandfather also played. And so, so I grew up with a drummer dad. And so, no surprise, myself and my two brothers all play drums. And it's, as mentioned, my dad got a 1965 Ludwig set when he came to America. And now that is mine, which I'm very happy about.
It sounds like music runs in the family. I love that. And you're also a dad. You have children?
Yes, I am a, well, as noted in different places, a girl dad. My daughter is, you know, we have a daughter. And, you know, it's, I'm quite lucky because, you know, as a Navy guy, I was bouncing around the world. And fortunately, I got my, fortunately, I got my, my tour in Bremerton. That's where I met my wife. So then we got married and we now have our daughter. So quite blessed on that.
And then we were talking about the show about how crazy things have been just in the last nine days with probably the number of emails that you've been getting, the number of meetings you've been having, the number of texts you're getting, phone calls, that sort of thing. Take us through the next six, seven weeks sort of leading up to January. What's kind of the process going forward now as we enter this transition now that you're the presumptive council member elect?
You know, I'm quite fortunate because I had a great team supporting me during the candidacy phase with my consulting team, my campaign manager, intern, you know, volunteers, all the above, my treasurer, which is very important if you run campaigns. And, you know, and so, but then I also had a secondary group of advisors, people that would, you know, you mentor and highlight different pieces, you know, some of their on my, you know, endorsement page, some that are not on the endorsement page, but were reaching out. And so I got a lot of good insights. So in some ways, it's continuing that to talk to them. And now the focus is like, you know, how to set up an office, like, you know, who best and how to structure that? And then getting smart on the different topics, you know, that are going to be coming up. So there's, there's a two piece to that. There's the kind of the informal, kind of like what I've been doing with these different individuals. And, and by the way, I want to have a wide breadth of, you know, individuals and groups. It goes to my good governance pledge, which you can see at our website, you know, to include all stakeholders and listen to them. And so there's that piece, but then there's the more formal piece too, where working with the city hall, the government in terms of the formal briefings and, you know, from the administrative side of things to, okay, here are some of the topics, you know, coming out of the mayor's office, working with the central staff and, you know, all those kinds of more formal aspects to the transition as well.
Lots of logistics there. And I just want to give everybody kind of a layout of the land, the district, District 7. In case you didn't know, that represents downtown, Belltown, Partridge Square, South Lake Union, Magnolia, Interbay, Juan, Queenend. What's pop of mind for you in your first month? I'm sorry?
I said, make sure to mention them all.
Got to mention them all. Did I mention Magnolia? I think I did.
You did.
Talk about what's top of mind for you in this district within your first month of office.
You know, I ran on public safety, public health and homelessness. And, you know, and as mentioned, like in my Seattle Times endorsement, you know, public safety and public health are two sides of the same coin. You know, you can't succeed in public safety if you don't also succeed in public health. So that's going to be the main piece, you know, and on the public safety side, we need to address the permissive environment that has allowed, you know, the, you know, what's been happening on our streets or on our buses and the like. And so we really need to have a, you know, strategy, a plan to, you know, press forward on that and really create that safe base. Because from there, you know, the kids can ride safely to school. Workers can go ride the bus downtown or shoppers, you know, and you can get in. And just trying to create that positive momentum and build that up. So then we're in a stronger position to even better help those that need the help as we transition into the next council.
How do you sort of come up with a timeline when you're talking about such big issues that a lot of the constituents are concerned about, especially when it comes to public safety, crime, homelessness? How do you, how do you come up with that timeline? How do you measure that success as you begin this transition into, into office?
Well, there's two parts to that. One is, and this goes to the briefings and talking to people in terms of the mechanical, you know, how the council moves forwards, you know, city, you know, working with the mayor and moving forward on that side. There's going to be a pacing to that. But then there's also the leadership piece. And I think that with the change in tone, with a reset of the council, that can be happened, that can happen much quicker. And I think we have the opportunity to do so. And I think that will pay dividends, which will then help the more formal parts of this, like with the council, working with the mayor and different pieces, the SPD staffing or, or the stand up of the new care department, all those kinds of things. If we have this reset of the council, reset of the tone, the environment, and I think we can really press forward on a quicker timeline. So there's two parts to that. One, you know, the, the actual programs that will have a certain timeline based on budgets and everything else. But I think on the leadership piece, we can press forward, you know, with it being enunciated and clearly given, I think that can move a lot quicker.
Is there one issue for you that has more priority compared to another? More urgency, I should say?
Well, they're all, you know, that's a hard question because each day is, you know, with homelessness piece and with the public health piece, those are, those are so important. So it's a little bit of, you know, very close, but at the, at the, I've always said, bottom line is that we have to have a safe base. And that includes for those that are, you know, that are on our streets or homeless or some varying degrees of, you know, the invisible, the visible, as we talk about. And I think that even they, it comes with a safe base and that's going to be the, you know, the first priority. You know, if we could pick in one, that that piece of the public safety will be the first.
I know when you're talking about that issue and the umbrella of that issue, one thing that's been brought up several times over the campaign is the impact these last couple of years have had on the police department and the number of officers that have been lost within the police department. I know for the number 600 has been out there. When you're dealing with recruitment efforts that have obviously been an issue across the country, when you're dealing with tight budgets or cuts, budgetary cuts, how do you make that happen of trying to build that police force back up?
This goes to that second part, the leadership piece we just talked about. And with the reset of the council, we can have a reset of its relationship with SPD. Because, you know, right now it's very toxic. We're not really going to be moving forward. But with a new council, with a new set of players, a new set of team, you know, those that have come back, the three plus the new, I think we have this opportunity to do so. And, you know, we have to acknowledge, by the way, the reason why we have a consent decree, we have to acknowledge those issues that were there. But we should also acknowledge the fact that we've made great progress. Our police department is probably the best in the country because of all these reforms. And we should move forward on that. And we should celebrate that. And we should, you know, highlight this. And note that we are supportive of the police. You know, your job, anybody's job, you want to have the support of your boss, upper management, whatever it may be. Well, the city council is the upper management, if you will, of the police department. So we, we have to show that support. While at the same time, holding accountable when things go sideways and the leadership team for that. But I think if we say, hey, we are supportive, we believe in you, we believe in the reforms that have been accomplished, we believe we can move forward. I think that will change the tenor of the relationship. And, you know, you talk about actions in the first week or month. I'm going to say, hey, to the members, the men and women of the police department, give us one year. If you're looking to retire, if you're looking to transfer to another jurisdiction, give us one year to show that, hey, we're going to make a change, we're going to have a new relationship and we're going to create new opportunities for the men and women of the police department. And, and this goes to, is for the fire and rescue side, you know, with the fire department, because they're under a lot of stress. And then, and then thirdly, we really need to support this, you know, this fledgling news piece with Chief Smith with the care department. And I think that we can do that as well with this kind of new engaged leadership that's positive, you know, acknowledges the challenges in the past that created, you know, the need for the consent decree, but also acknowledges that we have made great strides and we believe in our police department, we support them. And, and because everybody needs a support. This is one reason why Victoria Beach, who chairs the African American Community Advisory Council endorsed me. And so I want to work with her and other members of the community to ensure that we're moving forward. And going back to the very beginning, again, creating that safe base for, for all of us.
We talked about public safety. We've talked about policing, law enforcement, drug possession, another big issue that's a pop of mind for people who live within the district. How do you feel about the drug, specifically the fentanyl crisis happening in downtown?
It's, it's a, it's a massive, I was going to use different, it's a tragedy. Yeah, I was going to say challenge again, but it's a tragedy what we've seen. I've been on the streets, I've done walk-alongs, ride-alongs. And I've, I've seen those, I've talked to those that are, are in these conditions. And it's, it's a tragedy. And we need to, you know, attack it basically, you know, it, this goes to the permissive environment. The permissive environment that enables the criminal set or random acts of violence is also enabled this, this fentanyl fueled drug market, which those that suffer the most are those that we see on the streets. And so first and foremost, we have to go after that. We have to, you know, do it from a, you know, engaging way. Obviously, you know, as I said on the campaign trail, we need to lead with compassion first and wisdom. So we need to work with the LEAD program, for example, the new care department. And, you know, and that's illustrated, by the way, after the public drug use and possession law came into effect. You know, like the first 10 arrests under that, that law, seven of them were diverted to LEAD for, you know, assessment and services. And then three were remanded because they had warrants, you know, so there's a reason why those three needed to be, you know, arrested and pulled off the street. But the seven were, you know, sent, you know, were diverted, if you will, to, you know, assessment and services piece. And that's, that's so important to, you know, really move forward. And then the second piece to this as well is, instead of having, you know, kind of some dysfunction with the city council, we need to work together and we will, along with the mayor. So we as a city can work with the state and the county to really push forward that kind of, and the federal side too, to really attack the, the infrastructure and the networks that go to, you know, how the fentanyl gets here in the first place. You know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a hard problem that needs to be attacked, that the city needs to be fully engaged. And I think with a council that's working well together, along with the mayor, I think we can, you know, push that ball further down as well.
Well, I know that some of these issues impact, you know, every neighborhood within District 7, but the downtown core gets a lot of attention. It seems like the issues are much more severe downtown. And I'm thinking back to, you know, the comments that we receive, you know, over the past weeks and months about people saying, I never go downtown anymore just because I hear about all that stuff that happens, the drug use, the drug problem, the crime, homelessness, I just don't want to go down there. Tyra and I have had conversations from various crime events. I think back to the incident with Yina Kwan and the impact that had on the community. How do you change that mindset from folks that not only live in downtown, but maybe outside the region about this is a place that we want you to feel safe going to? This is a place that we want you to be able to come to and feel like you can have dinner with your family, go shopping, whatever the case may be. How do you change those mindsets?
Well, your question basically underlines the need for it to create that safe base. Your question underlines the reason why that is the first thing. We've given all these hard issues that we have in terms of the public health, the homelessness and then others like affordable housing. It all comes down to that safe base. That's underlined your question. And so this is where we have to have that change, you know, we have to have that change relationship with SPD. We need to have that public drug use and possession bill and the law. We need to, you know, not have, you know, public drug use happen on our buses and our light rail, our public transport systems. And we need to be adamant about that. We need to push that. And so really change the, the environment so that then people then do are safe. And it also requires people like me to be downtown and, you know, taking the public transport or being down there and seeing this and then working with, you know, the mayor and the departments, SPD and so forth, to really, you know, move this forward. And I think, again, it will build its own momentum. If we take these positive actions, like with SPD staffing and, and, you know, really have that call and then have, you know, the SPD, you know, the men and women of SPD stand up and say, yes, we're going to give you one year, we're going to give you this chance. And instead of, you know, retiring or moving to another jurisdiction. And when that word gets out, I think it will build its own momentum. And then we will continue to do it. But we have to take concrete actions related to public transport, you know, in front of, immediately in front of businesses and the like. And, and, and we really need to build up the capacity on the public health side. And this goes to why I say that as a city, we need to be engaging with the state because who's responsible for mental health spend? It's a state function. And, you know, we shouldn't be in the bottom half of the 50 states. We should be in the top half. We should be in the top 20. We should be like U Dub, you know, top five, you know, in football, you know, if you want to draw a parallel. If we were, imagine how much capacity in terms of mental health beds we would have. You know, the county is responsible for public health. We need to be working with them. We need all those five care levy, you know, the care centers from the levy from this past spring. We need to have that capacity built up. If we have that capacity and with that change, leadership and, and, you know, again, the compassion and the wisdom, the wisdom piece means we cannot accept public drug use on our buses, our public transport systems. We can't accept it in the immediate, you know, entry area of a business and the like. We have to have these pieces understood and then acted on. And when it's done so, in combination with the other points I mentioned, it's going to change the environment and then people feel more safer to come down. And this goes to my, my, my work as the, the public safety chair of Queenend Community Council. It's about activating because what, the best success is when people come in and use. We had issues with our parks on Queenend, but we activated. We worked with parks to clean them up. So we have sightlines so people can see in and out. And then as a stay at home dad, I would bring my daughter to the parks. And then if there's a lot of activity, then the bad activity, the illegal activity or, or different types like that, don't happen because they're not allowed to be. They don't, they want to go to a quieter place. They want to go somewhere else. And that's what we have to basically do here too. It's the same concept, you know, in terms of what we did on Queenend with parks and like a block watch approach. It's the same thing that we need to do now as a city with downtown and put those pieces in play and have a strategy and then act on it.
And for those watching, now is the time to ask a question, if you do have one for Bob. He's here and ready to answer your questions as well. Bob, what does a better downtown look like to you, especially when it comes to doing business down there? So many small businesses and even big stores have closed down since, you know, COVID. Also during all the protests that happened in 2020. What's your plan in place to help bring some of those businesses back?
Now, having said all we said about the safe base, have that already said? Now is the, the next step, like the mayor's activate downtown plan, you know, in terms of engaging with the small businesses, activating streets, doing, you know, kind of pop-up things where it's a three-on-three basketball tournament or something along those lines. You know, the arts community, bring in the arts community. I was very fortunate to be endorsed by the Allied Arts of Seattle. You know, use that, all this capacity that we have in our city, all these great minds, all these great ideas, let's bring them to the fore. Let's bring the arts community. How can we do things with our storefronts, particularly those that are empty? You know, in terms of kind of giving that, that idea that, you know, we're moving forward and it's, you know, it's, it's attractive to see, you know, in terms of the art, for example. And then, you know, really kind of push that with the support of the city government. And I think, you know, particularly when you combine it with, you know, the new waterfront, you know, the new ferry terminal. We have all these great positive things. And then if we combine these two together, you know, in addition to the safe base, I think then we'll create that momentum. But we really should, should be supporting like the new small business piece and working with the, you know, the, you know, the commercial real estate community on that and say, how can we do this? How can we do it? Because in the long run, it helps everybody if we're working together. That's one thing, by the way, that I learned on, you know, the campaign trail. We talk about small business, but it's not just small businesses. It's big business, small business, medium business, everyone in between, because it's an ecosystem. It's so, it's so interesting to see how they rely on each other. You know, I talked to a lady who was in the chiropractor business and she was like, I may have to close down, you know, some stores when we have to move because, you know, Amazon is not going to be here the way we thought, you know, we can see this with the PCC decision. And so we have to, you know, be mindful of the, the whole ecosystem and how can we support that? And how can they support each other to move forward?
To be frank, Bob, this seems quite daunting to address such big issues that are in need of addressing at the same time. And I'm sure it's, it's, you know, people have lost patience in, in waiting for solutions or for these issues to be addressed or see some big differences in them. Are you asking for the public to have more patience as this process moves forward, this new council kind of moves into place? What do you tell them?
Yes, some patience, but, you know, not too much. I think we can act. And for me, it is daunting in a way. But I think it's very doable, you know, as somebody in my, my naval career, you know, I've been, you know, deployed either at sea or in country, like five wars. And, you know, it's when you go through things like that, you understand that you, you have a difficult to-do list. You have a checklist that you need to work through, but you, you assess it, you look at it, you create your plan and you step forward. And I think we can do that here. And, you know, and again, take advantage of all that we have in the city, you know. I'm a graduate at the Evan School. Yeah, it's a top public administration school in the country. And so we definitely have great minds that we can look to tap and, and to bring together. And it's just about, you know, having that positive, you know, political environment, getting away from the dysfunction and toxicity, and, you know, really moving forward. And I think we can do that. And again, yes, this is a daunting piece, but, you know, I've had other assignments, you know, when I became a naval diplomat in Russia and Moscow, that was a daunting piece. And I just think that we can do it, particularly because I know the, the members coming on to the council. We're, we're a good cohort. I know Rob and one and Joy and three, Maritza and four, Kathy and five. And, you know, Dan, you know, coming back in six and, and, and as mentioned, as somebody yesterday, you know, Tammy Morales and I have spoken, and she's also looking to, you know, find those common areas that we can work together. You know, her and I probably won't agree on a lot of things, but there's surely some things like she did with council member Alex Peterson. And I think having that kind of change in tone with the, you know, the relationship with the council members will really, you know, pay dividends moving forward.
Thank you, Bob. I'm surprised we haven't gotten any questions.
I was just going to say, I'm checking to see if we have any.
Nobody's asked one yet.
We have one from Michael saying, a family of drummers. Do you need a guitar player? Bob does that too.
How often do you get to play, Bob?
Very little. And I'm poor. My brother, my brother, my brother Bill, he is the guitarist and he's also drum, and he's a singer. My other brother sent drums and can sing as well. I don't know why I can't sing. But I play well enough to, you know, to entertain myself. And at the beginning part of the pandemic, I started getting back into it, you know, playing little Bill Withers, you know, there ain't no sunshine when you're gone. And I've, I've fallen off again. And I tell you what, you can't, you know, being on a campaign trail is not conducive to any hobby that you may have because your, your, your focus is focused on, you know, consumed by the campaign itself.
Yeah, for sure. Are you a good cook?
I was. A stay-at-home dad, I, you know, I focus on that. And then, you know, the ability to be a good cook is also kind of tied to the amount of time that you can prepare and get ready for that. And you can do a lot of things with olive oil, salt and pepper. So.
I like that. I'd agree with that too. What are your plans for next week? We know how we have a, a big holiday coming up a week from today. What are your big plans next week?
With family, you know, it's interesting, you, it's, it's a great thing. I'm really happy for my daughter to have this opportunity to, you know, to be with family, big family. Because as you, as I mentioned earlier, I'm first generation American and most of my family was in England. And so we didn't have like a big family to, you know, to get together and for her to meet with her cousins, for example. So we look forward to that. During the pandemic was primarily my, her grandparents, my, my in-laws and our family. But now that that's passed, we have this opportunity to, you know, to get together in a more broader family perspective. And so I look forward to that and, and call back to my family in my hometown and as well. So that'll be nice.
One thing that I like to do when we kind of hit this time of year is to, you know, I think it's important to think about things that you're thankful for. And I know that family is obviously one of those obvious biggie ones. When you sort of look back at the past, past year and even this process of being involved in running for public office, what are you thankful for as you look to next week and Thanksgiving?
You know, the first thing that comes to my mind is, you know, the, I'm thankful for the support of my family. People don't know how hard it is to be a candidate. It's so hard to pay the time commitments, but also, you know, you do get attacked and which may continue after the election. And so I'm really supportive of like my wife's, you know, what she's done to, to fill in because I can't be the stay-at-home dad that I want to be. And, you know, that, that is, that comes to the fore. And, you know, so I'm very thankful for the support of my, my wife and my daughter. Um, and uh, you know, that that is, that comes to the fore. And uh, you know, so I'm very thankful for the support of my my wife and my daughter um in this campaign. She's younger, but I really appreciate that. And then more broadly, I also, you know, really appreciate the support of those circles that were around me in this past year, particularly during the campaign. Uh, because it makes the difference, you know, it was so helpful to be uh from the Queen Anne Community Council because I had eight years on that board to see what was going on in the city. But that's not enough. And so talking to former council members, current council members, other people have been involved either in the, you know, political world, the business world, union world, um, you know, nonprofit, community builders. Um, I'm really thankful for for all their insight, but ultimately uh back, uh, I'm really thankful for the support of my wife, Sarah.
A lot to be thankful for, for sure. And it sounds like you have a a really strong family structure. We do, just before we were about to let you go, we've got some viewer comments. Someone by the username of M says, what is the definition of public safety? What does it encompass in your definition, Bob?
That is a great question. And because everybody defaults to crime and security. Uh, when I chaired the Public Safety Committee for the Queen Anne Community Council, I was clear um that our remit, our mission was, you know, crime and security, but also fire and rescue, which fortunately for us is really strong in the city, but then also emergency preparedness, which I think is relatively weak in terms of, you know, the big earthquakes, tsunami and the like, you know, are we ready? So that in in a lot of ways is public safety, but even broader than that, I would have joint meetings with Transportation Committee on pedestrian safety, you know, bringing somebody from S dot in or traffic safety, bringing somebody from the Traffic Enforcement Division of SPD. And uh, and we also had meetings with the Parks Committee and regarding, you know, the safety in the parks where we learned so much. That that goes to, I said earlier about activating parks. We learned a lot by talking to the representative from the parks. And it's not just parks itself, by the way, it's also the green belts, understanding what's going on in our green belts. And so for me, I'm going to bring that kind of approach to the city council with respect to public safety in terms of how I, how I look at it and how I want to, you know, you know, approach all the different issues that fall under that big umbrella called public safety, because it's not just crime and security. And that's that's important for everybody.
You mentioned things like uh traffic as well, which is obviously a part of public safety. So it is a really big umbrella term. We have another question from O C N twenty three. This person says, there are many homeless advocate groups in Seattle. Which one is Kettle most likely to work with, Jimmy?
You know, I've gotten uh, this is, there's so many positive things about being a candidate, I think, in terms of meeting with different people. And um, and on this point, you know, like meeting uplift northwest, you know, with the, you know, the dignity of work, that they work with people, you know, and bring them in and employment and then, you know, building that through the dignity of work. But also, you know, I was in Ballard with a street level team uh that was doing outreach and, you know, along Larry and those areas of of Ballard. And then uh, and also we heart Seattle too. I know uh, I, you know, going into the green belts and the parks and, you know, you see their outreach um and what they're doing in terms of engaging us, you know, and trying to support those, meeting them where they are, they're at. Uh, but then also encouraging them to not remain where they're at and then to move forward, uh which is important again to this uh public health and homelessness uh challenge that we're facing.
Another question that we got from Ocean too is, can you commit to doing it right along with law enforcement if you haven't already? Um, from Ocean is saying, um, I don't believe any of the last city council members have done one. I don't, I can't confirm that myself, but making a commitment to go right along with law enforcement.
I have done it already and I'm I'm more than happy to do it again after January.
What did you take away from that experience, Bob?
You know, you get some insight in terms of the, you know, the varied challenges they face, whether it's, you know, the whole breadth, they're kind of like what I was talking about, public safety, because they're 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 being challenged on all these fronts. And then you also get an understanding of some of the, you know, the staffing issues and why it happens as a conversation. Um, you know, the your care department, you know, the your dual uh response piece and and the fact that we have to have this happen because the first thing that happened on my right along the shots fired um were two social workers. And so, you know, that was fired over their head. And it turned out that everybody was fine, um but it highlights the need to have the, you know, this kind of, you know, the the public health and public safety side working well together. And from that ride along, I mean, that was literally almost like the first thing, you know. All came out regarding shot fired uh two social workers. Um, it was in District Three Capitol Hill area. And um, you know, by doing that, you get a sense and, you know, and it builds on the experience that I have both in the Navy and as as, you know, with the Public Safety Committee of Queen Anne Community Council.
Well, thank you so much, Bob, for joining us. You really did give us a lot about your plans and your timeline. Uh, the people here watching saying that you gave some quality answers specifically to that question on public safety. Um, to be upfront, I live in your district, so I'll be following personally um what you do. And as as a news organization, we'll continue to follow your work and the rest of uh the uh city council uh candidates and winners when those are announced. Uh, but thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Can I, can I just say two things really quick?
Sure.
Um, because I know this is part of your 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 standard show. Um, one is uh with my bald head, it doesn't cost really anything. I can do it myself, uh so no cost. Although on Queen Anne, we have a couple of great barber shops, the Counterbalance Barber Shop. And then twenty one, you know, C Renee on twenty one uh in Boston Street. So you you have uh good options in either end of the Queen Anne. And uh, and in the middle too, across from Trader Joe's. And so you got great options for haircuts, or if you're like me, you can also do it by yourself. And then the the one last thing is I wanted to highlight was my U Dub veteran pin. And uh, and and then the fact that, you know, when it is cold, because I have a, you know, a bald head, that, you know, like when the apple cup comes around.
Oh, Bob, come on, you had to go there.
I could be ready.
I'm gonna make Steve upset, Bob.
So uh, you know, hey, there you go.
It was going so well, Bob. Listen, I think you guys are gonna win next week because we, oh boy, this season has just got for us.
So.
It'll be a fun game next week though.
All right.
Thank you so much.
So much. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob. Congratulations to you and good luck. Uh, as you begin term in January.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it very much. Look forward to seeing you again.
Happy Thanksgiving. All right.
Thank you for joining us. Go Dogs. Como.
Wait a minute.
We have. Speaking of Thanksgiving, um, it was great to hear about Bob's traditions and what he his family are gonna do next week. Steve, what are your Thanksgiving traditions?
Uh, traditions is, I think you and I both experienced this just because of the nature of the business that we work in and the odd hours and, you know, news doesn't stop on the holidays. So the past couple of years, I actually have not done a Thanksgiving feast on the actual holiday. We usually do it weekend after weekend before that sort of thing. But there's one thing in my family that we seem to gravitate towards every single year. And I want to show you a picture here. Do you see that?
It looks like good. I don't know what it is, but it does look like brown sugar and butter or something.
What is it? Yeah, I was gonna say, what does it look like? There's some butter for sure.
It's like brown sugar. It looks like the beginning of a crust, a good pie crust.
Hmm.
Am I right?
Totally not. This is the finished product.
Oh, is it cornbread? Wait, what is that?
This is something called uh rutabaga. It's uh a vegetable. It kind of has like a dark red creamish color. So tradition in my family is that's part of the Thanksgiving feast, which probably isn't one of those biggies, but we, I should, I I say we, but my mom um would put it in like a food mill and kind of like cook it up. So it's kind of mushy and it comes out to that previous photo here and like do it by hand. Obviously you can use a little food processor now, but this is one of those side dishes that's, it's got a little bit of a bitterness flavor, you know, but it's just, it's delicious in my family. That's what we do.
I was not expecting vegetable.
No.
I don't know if this directs it toward your dish, but. I don't know if that was their plan or in response to your family tradition.
Could be. What about you?
Um, let's see, family traditions. Well, we eat. I also obviously am in news because that's why I'm here in this room on this show. So I did work Thanksgiving last year. I ended up going out dinner on Thanksgiving Day and then had like a traditional Thanksgiving meal the next day. But my family and I, we make all the fixings, um soul food. We have greens, we have dressing, we have turkey, mac and cheese, yams, um all the desserts. It's always a fun time and it's it's really just family time. It's what it's all about. Uh, but comments, leave a comment. What are your family traditions? We love to know. Oh, Michael says, I am responsible for all the pies in our family. And I know my dad wants some kind of apple crumble pie. Oh, that is so good, especially when it's warmed up with some vanilla ice cream.
Yes. Oh.
So good. That sounds delicious.
What about, what about this question? Are you team fresh cranberry sauce? Do you know maybe that yelled in the can?
I personally don't mind either, but my mom makes a really good homemade cranberry sauce. This is interesting, though. People, not interesting, it's really not a surprise, but a lot of people, this is interesting. A lot of people don't like cranberry sauce. In fact, there's a new survey that came out from the Vacationer. And this was a survey they put together about traditional Thanksgiving foods that people dislike. Cranberry sauce tops the list. Thirty one point forty nine percent of surveyors, and I believe they talked to uh over a thousand American adults over the age of eighteen. For the third year in a row, cranberry sauce has take, has took in first place as the most disliked Thanksgiving dish, which is not even a dish. It's just like a topping.
A side thing. Yeah, you like put it on something like around the turkey. It's always a side dish.
Also surprising, sweet potatoes and yams, like yum.
Especially with some marshmallows or like uh brown sugar on top.
Yeah. Turkey's pretty high on that list too. So I'm like, people don't like the main things, but at the bottom, corn, apple pie or carrot. How did carrots top turkey and dressing? Interesting.
I love this comment that we just got from M who uh asked questions from Bob earlier. Cranberry haters have never had good cranberry. Agreed.
They need my mom's homemade cranberry sauce. Ooh, that sounds fun, Samantha. Lots of Peruvian food and be watching every single Christmas around. That's a good Thanksgiving tradition.
That sounds like a fun night. And then Michael chiming in again. I personally enjoy doing sweet potato pies to pumpkin. I know that's a very popular thing too.
No, Michael, I agree with you. I grew up having sweet potato pie, pumpkin pie. It was like if I was at a friend's house or and other family members, but in my fam, it is potato pie.
And then Ocean and chiming in again, cranberry is decorative. Most folks don't like it. It's tradition.
It's decorative. It's really just like a decorative little, you know, spruce up your dish with some cranberry.
Yeah, let us know. Like, what do you, what do you do for your family? Let us know in the comments and chime in on what your traditions are as you uh gear up for Thanksgiving. Obviously, one of the big things that we're looking forward to next week, and Bob alluded to it, even though I think it's gonna be a tough game for the Cougs, is the Apple Cup, which is coming up a week from Saturday.
What's what's the size, Steve? What's going on? Why the size?
Why the size? Just because Wazoo's had a very difficult football season the last six weeks. So um, I'm expecting a uh very big difference on the score, shall we say? Um, I hope I'm pleasantly surprised, but look at this tweet from U Dub saying the go game is sold out. So that's seventy thousand plus people packed the Husky Stadium next Saturday. Kickoff is at one o'clock. And obviously, a lot of the attention has been on, you know, since it's the sold out, getting tickets, that sort of thing. Um, was checking, just checking through one of the websites on how much you could potentially pay if you still want to go, even though the game is sold out. Uh, so let's bring up SeatGeek, which is like the official seat partner for U Dub Athletics. This is the cheapest seat right now, hundred and seventy seven bucks on the end zone. So not a bad seat. You know, all the way up to like one ninety, two hundred, that sort of thing. Blah, blah, blah. A lot of the attention this week has been on what's happening with the Pac twelve. Um, obviously, U Dub filed their appeal over the decision by the Woodman County Judge this week to give full control of the conference, the Pac twelve to Wazoo and Oregon State. There was some new developments today, uh which will bring up that as well from Yahoo Sports. Basically saying that WSU and OSU are inching closer to finalizing a two-year football scheduling alliance with the Mountain West. Um, so essentially the Mountain West teams would pay, I think, uh play seven in conference games and they would play one game with Oregon State or one game with uh WSU. But yeah, Apple Cup is kind of the biggie. And the big question right now is, is it gonna be the last one?
Oh, that'd be really sad. A long time tradition, right?
Hundred and fifteen times that they've met. This, it's all the way back to nineteen hundred. We did a little digging here. The first one,
Wow.
nineteen hundred.
Long time ago.
Late in Seattle. It was a five-five tie. So nobody won the first one. It was a tie.
Okay.
Yeah.
They were allowed to do that back then?
They were allowed to do that back then. U Dub won last year. Wazoo won the year before. U Dub has won most of them. So the odds are in the Huskies' favor. But this game brings back so many amazing um traditions and memories. I think one of the last ones that I went to was this one back in twenty eighteen.
Wow, look at all that snow. It almost looks like an ice rink. I get was confused for a second. I'm like, where's the football field? It looks like you're at Climate Fletch Arena at a cracking game.
It looks like you're on, you know, indoors at an arena. This was Martin Stadium and the snow started falling so heavily that they had to bring those little snow shovels out just to draw the lines.
Wow.
And Wazoo ended up losing. And so this was me after the game.
Salty. Is that McDonald's?
It was McDonald's. I was crazy craving a uh vanilla shake and some french fries. So my, one of my good friends, it was my college roommate, were like, we're going to McDonald's to eat some fast food to Yoko Norsharo's.
Oh, gosh.
Did you guys, you guys had a big one with USC, the UCLA, or play for the victory bell, I think it is, right?
I did go to one of those games. I wish I had my pictures prepared, but I always have fun tailgating, going to games. I was in grad school at time when I was at USC, a grad student. So the vibe's different when you're going to games. Uh, I don't know. I feel like when you're an undergraduate college student, you're definitely more in it for the school spirit, but that is a very big game that happens. Como commenting, okay, I know I said go Dogs earlier, but where are our Cougs? Are you a Coog? Are you a Dog? Who are you rooting for? For the Apple Cup? Leave it in the comments. I am a Coog by default because look at who's across from me. Look at who is sharing the screen with me right now. I literally, Samantha says, someone get Steve a McDonald's sponsorship, hold the Grimace Shake. Oh, yeah, because that Grimace Shake is.
Or like an eggnog shake. Do they do an eggnog during this time of year, like an eggnog milkshake?
No, that sounds delicious right now. Well, I'll be rooting for the Cougs by default, but typically when I'm watching any sports, I root for the winning team. That way I'm never sad.
Michael, no, 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 no. Come on now. Come on.
Well, we'll just have to see what happens and hopefully this isn't the last Apple Cup.
I hope so too.
Yeah.
Although I think, you know, given what's happened with the Pac twelve over the past couple of months, a lot of Cougs are thinking we don't want the partnership anymore. So we'll see what happens. A lot to come.
Yeah, wow, nineteen hundred. All right, Steve. Steve, in case you all haven't noticed, last week's episode, I mean, your hair always looks great, but it looks extra great right now. And that's because Steve got a haircut this week.
I did on Tuesday.
How much was it?
Um, we'll see. What do I get charged? I get charged about forty bucks. And then I usually give hmm like a thirty percent tip.
Okay.
That's every two weeks.
Every two weeks?
Yeah, because I like it tight on the side. I don't like it to be too long.
The reason we ask is this question has been trending on the internet, on Reddit, asking the lady, pan men, uh, how much do you pay for a haircut? This person says, I go to downtown salon. Five years ago, I paid sixty five dollars for a haircut before tip. Now that my hair girl has graduated from junior to senior stylist, it's eighty five. This person only cuts their hair once a year, so they're fine paying this. But other people are commenting what they pay. Starfishy seventy eight, one twenty, including tip. This is for wavy curly hair. And they don't get their hair cut more than two times a year because of that extraordinary price. Uh, eighty five to one hundred without a tip, depending on where I go. The folding paper says Vietnamese attorneys charging twenty dollars or something. That's a deal. Uh, but it's usually the average between seventy five, a hundred and twenty.
There was that one, I had to go go up a little bit, the Bagel Gremlin. So the Aveda and two, there's one uh Capitol Hill apparently. I actually used to, when I lived in Portland, I went to the Aveda down in Portland. Um, and that's one of those where, you know, the they're going through school, so like practice and that sort of things. And you can get one for like twenty five bucks as long as you're on.
A student, someone in training.
I had a great experience though. And it's it's pretty inexpensive for that wildcat style. So that's always.
I think so too, and you're also contributing to their training and their success. It has to be a lot of stress there. Uh, my sister actually just graduated from psychology school and she was going through that and now she's doing hair professionally. But I was like, who trusts you with scissors? It does definitely save you some money. I pay around. It does definitely save you some money. I pay around, and my friend just got a haircut. Um, and I'm getting like the washed, low dry flat iron and that's a typical, uh, typical hairstyle. Maybe goes for a hundred and twenty and that's not including the tip. I do not go every two weeks. I go like every two months.
It's weird cause I've heard something about typically, I think it's fair to say, you know, females would pay more for a haircut. Typically have more hair, right? Um, but men tend to go a little bit more often. So does the cost equally equal each other out? Or do men pay more overall? I don't know.
That's a good point.
A hundred bucks every month, I think. So that's like twelve hundred dollars a year.
Oh goodness.
Yeah.
Beauty. How much do you pay for a haircut in Seattle? Leave us a comment or wherever you live. Samantha said, instead of medical tourism, now doing beauty tourism. I saved my hair appointments for my fam visits to New Jersey. So much cheaper. You know, actually have, uh, friends who do that. They actually will travel out to the city to get their hair done, whether it's because they like their stylist back home or because it will save them money.
Yep. I think we have a couple of coworkers here at Kommo that when they're going to the family who live out of state or go to a previous market that they worked in and they've had that relationship built up with the stylist is they'll squeeze in the cut ball of the air. Just, it's, you build out that relationship with the stylist. You trust that person. They kind of know what you want. Um, there's a good rapport and you want to keep giving them business, right?
For sure.
That special relationship that you don't want to give up.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it is an interesting conversation and, um, I will say my hair, the price of my hairstyle has been up in the past couple of years. I'm assuming because of inflation, like everything else has gone up. Like, cause the relationship's more important to me than the cost at this point. And while trust there.
There is. Yeah.
My hair, my net.
Exactly. I, little shout out to mine. So I've been going to the same guy who opened up his own shop in Ballard. He started that booth in, uh, Fremont, I believe. That's where I started going to see him. It's called The Sing Barber. Uh, he sings. Um, it's a black owned business. It's an LGBTQ owned business. And he's just a really great guy. There's a couple of stylists that work along with him, but, um, trust him a lot. He does a great job.
DeMarcus. And if he sings, does he sing while cutting your hair?
Uh, he is not, although I haven't asked him to do that, but he has put out his own music.
Oh.
Um, and it's really cool. He has, um, I think every year on his anniversary of the shop when it opens, he, oh, yeah, put on a little shindig. He usually performs during that shindig. He's a great voice.
We should have him on the show. Shout out DeMarcus. I'll shout out one of your stylists too. Then Booty Violet Khan, then Rin, then she does all her types.
Does a fantastic job, I should say.
Thank you, thank you.
Your hair obviously.
This was a really good episode. We talked about so much. We got to know Bob Kettle, who is now representing District Seven. We talked about his plan. We talked about Thanksgiving, Apple Cup. Next week, we are going on a break, taking a little hiatus. For one day, one week because of Thanksgiving.
Yes. I believe it's our first break. We started that in June, right?
We'll miss you, but don't forget about us the week after, because we will be back.
We will be back in December. And one thing you totally forgot about this morning was last week, we were on twenty fifth, this little, uh, brown bag surprise.
Yes.
I think you still have it.
And guess what? We're gonna start playing a game. What's in the brown bag? You wanna guess what's in the brown bag right now?
I mean, I already know, but, or unless you can say something. Did you put something else in there?
Nothing's in the brown bag. But, but there will be. The next time, the next time you see us, there's gonna be a guess what's in the brown bag. Um, we'll see. We're getting into the holidays. I don't know. See what's in the bag.
That's like a good two week tease right there.
One hundred percent. Yeah. Let's see what date that is. You welcome to mark in your calendars, Thursday, November thirtieth.
I like it. As we take a little sip. Um, something that you're thankful for, I'm gonna put it on the top. Something that you're thankful for this year as we gear up for Thanksgiving.
Um, there's been a lot of good experiences, a lot of new and good experiences, uh, this year for me, living in Seattle. One, um, is actually doing a show. Um, this is very cheesy about saying it because we're doing the show right now and we're live. But this really has brought a lot of life to my experience doing this here in Seattle. I always love social media and visual news. So I feel right at home doing a show like this one. And I think people like it as well. It always formed my heart. You know that I have a job where I can help people and be of value and, and inform them. And so now that we're doing this on this new platform, uh, that's even amplified more. So I'm thankful for sound on. I'm thankful for my friends, family. Love them so much. I want to see them this Thanksgiving. Cause I'll be here with you, Steve, which is great as well. Um, we're at Thanksgiving. How about you? What are you thankful for?
Oh my gosh, so many things. I would, I would agree with the show too. I think when we, when we started this back in June, it was, we didn't know how this was gonna evolve. And we knew it was gonna change over time and it has. I, I loved the weekly conversation just about, we talked about really important issues, talk about some fun things. And I think it's brought us closer together. Um, as we work on this project. And I'm also thankful for, yeah, family and close friends for sure that it helped me through a lot this year. It's been kind of a roller coaster year, but you've helped me out greatly and I couldn't have gotten through it without them. So I'm very grateful.
I'm grateful for that too. And I love that for you. Michael says he's thankful for us. Thanks, Michael. We're thankful for you too. And this year, it's really good. Thank you. We appreciate you watching every week and, and Samantha as well. Um, before we go, it's like, I just want to play this video of this Thanksgiving food to get us all ready. You guys ready to pick up on the microphone? I, I'm so excited for Thanksgiving. I hope you all have a great holiday. And we'll, we'll see you next, not next week, the week after, November fourtieth.
That's right. Have a good day.